Mayor Pro Tem Bullock. Councilmember Amador.
Present.
Councilmember Teeter.
Here.
Councilmember Carson.
Present.
Councilmember Diaz.
Here.
Councilmember McElDowney.
Here.
Councilmember Elliott.
Present.
Councilmember Douglas.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, and for the record, Mayor Pro Tem is out of state. And I'm open for a motion to excuse him from tonight's meeting. Mr. Teeter.
Make a motion to approve or nay from the meeting tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Amador. Second. I have a motion and a second to excuse Mayor Pro Tem Bullock from the meeting this evening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'd like to ask the audience to please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, now, I'm going to ask staff to pass the microphone around, allow the audience to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm John Parker with United Power.
And I'm Tom Green with United Power.
Alfredo Esguerra.
Maria Esguerra.
Nicole Frank.
Frances Marlin.
Harvis Thomas, Adams 14 School Board.
Lindsay Willett, City Clerk's Office.
Karen O'Donnell, Parks Recreation and Golf.
Mike Brown, Parks Recreation and Golf.
Kathy Blakeman, Human Resources.
Armando Ardeola, Finance.
Michelle Halsted, City Manager's Office.
Cheryl Carstens, Finance.
Richard Frank.
Maria DeAndrea, Public Works.
I'm Jim Kraus with Flatiron Constructors.
Dennis Moon, Police Department.
Jennifer Allen Thomas, representing Kit Kat.
Susan Carver Hall, representing Kit Kat.
Great, thank you all for being here tonight. We're going to get into this agenda. We're going to start with proclamations and recognitions. We have one on the agenda tonight, which is the GFOA Award Recognition. I want to invite the Finance Department staff forward to accept the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award presented to Commerce City by the Government Finance Officers Association. This is the first year that Commerce City has received this award, and is a significant accomplishment for our organization. So, congratulations to our staff. I'm going to turn it over to Cheryl. You have a few words you want to say?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of council. Armando and I are pleased to accept the award on behalf of the city tonight. We're really excited to be a first-time recipient of this award. There are many staff members and members of leadership, yourselves, that go through a very long budget process each year, and this is a testament to all the hard work that all of those individuals are putting into the process. So, we're really proud of this award and grateful to be here tonight to receive it from you.
Awesome. We take a lot of pride in the fact that we try to spend our tax dollars wisely. We know it's the residents who pay for the services, and we want to make sure we get the best bang for the buck. And to make sure that the books are all in order is very important. And transparent process that we expect here on the City Council, and you're doing that, so thank you very much. Now, if the City Council, please, join me down front to give this award to our senior staff of our Finance Department. All righty, next item is Citizen Communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address the City Council on businesses and affairs of the city. The city is not able to hear any comments on land use matters that are before or may come before council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. City policy prohibits campaigning during citizen communication. Please give your name and address for the record, and keep your comments limited to three minutes, please. After we're done, then I'll ask if there's anybody in the audience who did not get the opportunity to sign up that wishes to speak to the council tonight. As of right now, we have two folks that have signed up, or two different subjects that have signed up. I want to first invite Tom Green and John Parker from United Power. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Thank you for this opportunity, my annual visit, where I get to explain the cooperative difference. As you know, United Power is an electric cooperative. We're owned by the members we serve, and as such, we're operated on a not-for-profit basis. When we do have excess earnings, we call those margins, and we give those back to the members. And as our cash position allows, our Board of Directors elect to give those allocated amounts back to the members in the form of capital credits. And as Commerce City is a member in good standing of United Power, you are also entitled to those capital credits. In addition, we also serve close to 12,000 businesses and residents in the Commerce City area, primarily the northern half, north of 96th Street. And we're proud to say, this year, out of the $5 million allocation that the board had approved, over $170,000 of that went to residents directly in Commerce City zip code areas. And that does not include the industries that may have their headquarters outside of the Commerce City zip code. So, $170,000 went directly into the homes and businesses right here in Commerce City. Additionally, as I said, you're a member, you have 49 accounts with us, and that includes several streetlights, irrigation, and other connections with us. You actually have 1,964 streetlights through United Power that we service and maintain for you. And so, that means that you are also eligible to get your capital credits. And John, our new CEO, who was just named earlier this summer, is going to tell you that fabulous amount.
Tonight, we've got a check for the City of Commerce City of $15,480.80.
Awesome. Wow.
It's our honor to serve you. We really appreciate that, and I did bring the big check.
Good, I'll come down again. If the council want to come down, we'll get a picture.
I didn't want you to break.
Okay. Like to call Alfredo Esquera? Alfredo, come on up. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Well.
Council. Actually, I'm here a bit lost myself. I came to supposedly meet with other people that had issues with Highway 2 delineation and the closure of some left turns driving south. But apparently, nobody's here to talk about that, so I don't know if there is any...
It's okay that you're here.
Well, yes, but...
And we'll make sure that you get to talk to the right people. And I will be the first to say, we struggled with the turning movements on Highway 2.
Yes.
Because they've been there my whole life, growing up here. And part of the problem is, when we make that four lanes, and we put medians in place because of the four lanes, there's no way we can have some left turn movements that would be hazardous to our motoring public. But instead of getting into great detail, we do have Maria DeAndrea is our Public Works Director. You would look back here, she can... There you go, that's her. She can take you outside and talk to you a little bit about what your concerns are, and how to make sure you have the contacts you need to get the answers you need. Matter of fact, on my way here tonight, I talked to a Mr. Malloy that was also had some concerns about Highway 2. But everything is on budget and on time, and Maria will be able to address concerns with you about the left turn movements.
Okay. Okay. I had concerns about safety issues, for one. I understand that, you know, you're crossing a two-lane highway, but it's kind of been that way for many years.
Yeah, but it's only been two-lane for all those years, too. That's part of our... That's part of the problem with the new standards for... There's a governance that we follow called the MUTCD. It's the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And that helps regulate what we can and can't do, how close to intersections, how much traffic. And so, it says when something is going to become more unsafe. And you look at businesses like El Hardin, they lost their left turn movement as well. And we don't want to burden any of our businesses or residents, but we do want to make sure they're safe. So, if you would, if you don't mind, talk with Ms. DeAndrea, and she should be able to answer any of your questions. And if you have any further questions, more than welcome to call me, or the City Manager, or any council member. We'll do our best to make sure you understand why things are the way they are, and if we can be of assistance to make things better, we're always looking for that opportunity as well.
Okay. Thank you much. Thank you.
All righty. Now, is there anyone in the audience who came here tonight to speak to the City Council that didn't have the opportunity to sign up for citizen communication, that wants to use this time to address the council? Please raise your hand so that I know we have more folks that want to talk. Seeing none, then we're going to move on in the agenda. All right, we're moving into the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are six items listed under the Consent Agenda. Does anyone on the City Council wish to remove an item off of the Consent Agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, then I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Mr. McElDowney.
Mr. Mayor, would you move to approve the Consent Agenda?
Thank you. Mr. Amador?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. Will the City Attorney please read the titles of the Consent Agenda?
Resolution 2017-90, Resolution approving Second Amendment to intergovernmental agreement between the City of Commerce City and Adams 14 School District regarding replacement and reconstruction of elementary school baseball/softball fields. Resolution 2017-64, Resolution approving Award of Contract for Softball Field Improvements to T2 Construction, Inc. Resolution 2017-79, Resolution regarding the renaming of the Commerce City Recreation Center. Resolution 2017-80, Resolution regarding the naming of the Recreation Center on 112th Avenue. Resolution 2017-91, Resolution approving change order to contract with Flatiron Constructors, Inc. for the Tower Road Widening Project Regional Drainage Improvements. Resolution 2017-93, Resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement regarding North Metropolitan Industrial Area Connectivity Study.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. The titles have been read, and I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, I and one excused absence. The Consent Agenda is confirmed. We have one resolution tonight. It's Resolution 2017-94. This is a new one for me, after all the years of serving on City Council, that we've had a resolution like this come before us, at least that I can recall. This is a resolution removing members from various boards and commissions. I want to have a quick bit of discussion, because I'd like to, for the benefit of those that we are removing, I'd like to ask members who have served with them, or should have been serving with them, to make sure that we're doing justice by making the removals. So, one member is from the Cultural Council, and one member, I believe, is from the Housing Authority. I know Councilwoman Elliott and Councilwoman Carson both serve on the Cultural Council, and could you help the council with understanding why we would be removing this person? Councilwoman Carson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I will say that I wanted to say thank you to Jackie Meladondo, because she was a great member. I think her job became demanding. She was... She served as our secretary for a while, and was a very active member while she was there. We also have another one of our members in the audience, Susan. But when members cannot attend, we're a small group that we do a lot. So, we need everybody there in attendance and willing and able to participate. So, it is very difficult when we have members who can't attend. So, the Cultural Council is asking for this to be done, so that that seat can be opened up and put back out to the public, and get somebody who's able to attend the meetings and serve in that capacity.
Great, thank you. Councilwoman Elliott, you have anything to add?
No, I'll just go along with Councilmember Carson. You know, and just to give kudos, it was a delight to have her on the Cultural Council, and she did do a lot during her tenure. But it is important that we are able to fill that seat, because as Ms. Carson said, that we are a small group. And as you know, we're expanding to several different areas of the city now, and so, we need all hands on deck. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now, on the Housing Authority, Mayor Pro Tem Bullock is our member. Who is the alternate? Andrew, do you have anything you'd like to shed on the member, the reasons for removing this member?
I do not without consulting Mayor Pro Tem Bullock, but I would imagine that it was for attendance.
Probably. And that's what I get from the notes. So, because we do need, we need people active on these boards and commissions, before I ask for a motion, are either of the members that are being removed from boards or commissions in the audience that would like to have a chance to defend themselves as to why maybe they don't feel they should be removed? Seeing that they're not here, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter.
Make a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as a resolution as presented.
Yep. Resolution 2017-94, is there a second? Mr. Douglas?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2017-94. Let the City Attorney read the title, please.
Resolution 2017-94, Resolution removing members from various boards and commissions.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Just for the audience that's at home and here in the building tonight, there are some openings on some of our boards and commissions. Please sign up to participate and take an active role in your community. All right, now, we move on to the next item in our agenda, which is Presentations. We're going to start with the Capital Program Update, and I'd like to invite the Kit Kat Co-Chairs forward to the podium to begin the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to be before you again. My name is Susan Carver Hall. I am first co-chair. And this is... Go ahead and introduce yourself.
I'm Jennifer Ellen Thomas.
And she's our new co-chair on the Kit Kat Committee. Last month, the last three months have just flown by. I don't know where they went, with projects moving very quickly. The new Recreation Center structure is rapidly taking shape. It was great going out there and seeing it firsthand at our July Hard Hat Tour with the staff and council. I'm excited about the existing Recreation Center renovation that's going to start here shortly, later this year. The schematic design looks great, and as a longtime city resident, and a senior who's going to really enjoy that pool, that heated pool. What is it called again? I don't know. Yeah, the therapy pool. The design looks great, and I'm excited to see it come to fruition. I'm also excited to know that the progress on Tower Road and Highway 2 are coming along well, and these long-needed projects, and it will be wonderful to see them completed. It's... We're coming to that. It's amazing. Now, I'd like to introduce our new co-chair, Jennifer Ellen Thomas.
Thank you, Susan. And thank you, Mayor, City Council, and staff for creating this Citizen Advisory Committee. I have been pleased to get to know my fellow committee members and work with staff to discuss and provide input on capital improvement projects. Most recently, we have worked hard to prioritize the next five years of capital improvement projects. It has been interesting to see the projects and overall program from the city's perspective. This inside view really gives us the ability to make the best suggestions for the community on a holistic level. And being proud resident of Commerce City all my life, and made in Commerce City, I'm amazed with all the accomplishments. Now, I'd like to give the floor to the Director of Program Management, Scott.
Thank you, Susan and Jennifer. It's a pleasure, and it's great to have the Kit Kat team here with us tonight, so thank you for that. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council.
Good evening.
We're here for our 14th installment update of the Quarterly Report for the Measure 2K Program and other CIP projects. And with that, I'd like to... We're doing this on behalf... On behalf of the City Management Team and our colleagues in Public Works, Parks and Recreation, Finance, HR, IT, it is a team sport, and we really are coming together as we work on these facilities, projects right now. But just in sum, we'd like to just touch on the background of the update for the 2K Program. Again, this program was approved by the voters in 2013, and it committed to five projects in five years. The goals and objectives were to build high-quality facilities to lower the long-term maintenance costs, spend taxpayer dollars transparently and wisely, and to complete the projects on time. Quick update on the revenue side. As you recall, that this Measure 2K Program and ballot initiative is funded by a 1% increase to the sales and use tax, and that's in perpetuity. Currently, we're tracking $5.62 million have been received through May, and we're targeting $11.5 million through the end of the year. It's a bit conservative based on what we experienced last year, but that's a good way to approach this. The expenses that come out of that, that you see, have to do with the debt service and the debt payments, bond and program management, operations and maintenance costs, and project costs that are not funded with bond proceeds. The overall schedule, so the five projects in five years, and just as a reminder, we count the neighborhood projects as one project, even though there's actually three separate parts. But you can see, the projects are completed. The projects that are remaining in play are Tower Road Expansion, which is projected to complete by the end of this year, the new Recreation Center, which will open in May of 2018, and the existing Recreation Center by the end of 2018. So, we are absolutely on track for delivering the five projects in five years. Here's a graphical representation of how the work on the projects, in terms of dollars, will roll out. We've been talking about this large mountain that we're climbing, because we've got Tower Road, and the new Recreation Center, and the related infrastructure, all in play at the same time. You can see that where we're at right now, we've gotten over the peak of the hump, but there's a lot of work left to go on that right-hand side of the curve. That relates to actually standing up the new facilities, populating those facilities with furniture, fixtures, and equipment, mobilizing the staff with the HR and the IT teams. So, there's still a lot of work to go through the balance of the year, but the good news is, we're making great progress against that. On the CIP front, these are the major projects that we're tracking in Public Works and Parks and Recreation. I won't read the slide to you, but just looking at, as Susan already mentioned, the Highway 2 Widening Project is under construction right now, and that's tracking for completion next spring. And the Tower Pena Boulevard Ramp Project is currently in the design phase, and we're moving quickly on that. Some of the Measure 2K highlights on the contracting side is we have awarded a CMGC Preconstruction Services Contract for the additions and renovation that's gone to Golden Triangle. It's been through City Council. And we've issued the Recreation Center schematic design. This picture represents a number of you who are able to celebrate with us in Q2 at the topping-out party for the new Recreation Center. It is a really large and very impressive facility, and I know that there's going to be more and more excitement as we move forward on that project. Tower Road, we were able to take away that Segment 1 detour around the Second Creek Box culvert, and good progress is being made on that widening. On the CIP front, in terms of contracting, Sand Creek Natural Resource Damages Remediation Project, the RFB, has gone out. Same for the pavement mill and overlay for 2017. And importantly, IGA negotiations are still underway and being negotiated with the City of County in Denver and Denver International Airport. On the design front, the Tower Pena Ramp reached the 60% design mark. That's moving very quickly here in Q3, so we'll have good news to report out at the end of Q3 on that. Likewise, an important milestone was receiving the Cat X, the categorical exclusion, for the environmental approval from the Tower Pena Ramp. So, that's a major milestone, and one more thing behind us now. On the CIP front, Highway 2 Widening continues. Again, I mentioned April, mid-spring of next year is when we're targeting completion. And as we look ahead for Measure 2K, key things that we'll have is we'll be moving forward and advancing the design development of the existing Recreation Center. And on construction, we'll be closing in. This is the time we want to be closing in before winter with the roofing and the siding of the new Recreation Center, so we can be highly productive this winter. of the new recreation center so we can be highly productive this winter, and we'll continue the Tower Road construction in Q3. On the CIP look-ahead front, the Tower Pena ramp, 90% design will be completed, and we hope to be even further than that. We'll continue design of the RTD North Metro Area Station. On construction, Highway Two will continue, asphalt mill and overlay will begin, and the Sand Creek remediation construction project will be going. And with that, I know that was a lot of information quickly, there's a lot of things going on, but we want to take any questions you have, and then I'm going to invite the Citizens Advisory Committee folks back up for so, some of the really good news.
Does Council have any questions for Mr. Hergenrader at this time, or any of the staff working on the projects for 2K or the CIP projects? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Hergenrader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with that, I'd like to invite Susan Carver Hall back up.
Okay, now comes the fun part. We're going to show you in a very, since we, we've all been out there, those of us that were invited, we're going to go ahead and show you the, the attached, the presentation for what's, it's a real quick overlay of what's, what's been happening, a video kind of thing, of what's going on at the new rec center, so enjoy it.
Thank you very much. We get to drive out pretty regular and see how things are progressing, however, it's great that our residents at home and those who are in the audience have the chance to see a time lapse like that as to how the rec centers come along. All right, next item on the agenda, the 2017 Second Quarter Work Plan Update. Mr. McBroom?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. It's my pleasure to introduce our second quarter update tonight, and then I'll turn the bulk of the update over to Deputy City Manager Troy Smith. This is an exciting night for us geeks that enjoy working on the work plan on a, on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. We foreshadowed this at the last quarterly update, a new tool that we're starting to use internally to manage our work, report results, and the great news is there are some terrific tools available with this piece of software to make the information more easily accessible to City Council and, most importantly, to the members of the Commerce City community. It is a centralized platform. Again, we're providing all of our updates in one central database that helps us manage the information, analyze the data, and report results out to the community. It will provide citywide visibility. We certainly think it's important to continually earn and uphold the public's trust, and one way to do that is to demonstrate for them the value I believe they get out of their tax dollars and how we invest that back into the community through providing programs and services and executing projects on behalf of the community. It creates what I think is a very useful dashboard for City Council. It's a very simple way for City Council to take a look at any point in time at how we're doing, understand where things are going well, and understand where things are not going well, and to get more information about those things. We have a much better way to report progress to ourselves, to you as the City Council, and again, most importantly, out to the community, and that provides a great deal of public transparency. Although I believe the community trusts us as an organization, again, we have an obligation to continually earn and uphold that trust, being as transparent as we possibly can be, I think is a great way to continually earn and uphold that trust. And this tool will be a great way to provide the public a great deal more information about what we're doing on a daily basis. And as we've all found in our rules, there seems to be an insatiable appetite on behalf of the public that we serve for information about what we're doing and how we're doing it. So this is the first time that we'll be reporting results back to you using that new tool. So I'll, I'll turn the balance of the update over to Troy Smith.
Thank you, Brian. Our first two slides are not in our software system. Briefly, our economic activity report highlights in a PowerPoint slide, 311 new jobs in the second quarter and 57 new businesses added to the community through the second quarter of 2017. We're following the national trend with respect to unemployment, which continues to hold steady at very low numbers. On the real estate front, we have seen an increase in building pre-lease and speculative projects in the region. That's not just in our city, but in other cities around us as a result of the tight market. Residential housing values increased almost 11%, and single-family home sales are down 7% through the second quarter of this year. A quick budget update, nearly $20.7 million in revenue came in through the second quarter on sales and use tax, non-2K related sales and use tax. We have a budget of $60 million roughly, and through the second quarter of 17, we've collected more than $30 million in revenue, 51%, and our expenses are maintaining that budget at 49%. In terms of our sole-source procurements through the second quarter of this year, we received 24 forms requesting sole-source approval, which were approved for about 8% of the total general fund expenditure for 2017. I'm going to shift in just a moment to a report, but I just wanted to recap quickly a few things. We developed a five-level work plan to manage the priorities and the goals of City Council, including objectives, outcomes, strategies, and tactics. And once we developed that work plan, we set out to find software that would fit our needs and fit the plan that we built, as opposed to buying software and using it to make a plan that we weren't familiar with. And the product that we selected is called Invisio, and as Brian mentioned, this will be the first time we'll be presenting using that. Important to note that this is our first quarterly update done in that system, and we are still learning. Staff put their updates in this system for the first time, and it's very interesting how the updates all roll up within the system, and, and so we're still very much learning. There are a few steps of implementation that are left. The public dashboard, which will be displayed on our new C3 website, will come probably the second or third week in September, and we're yet to activate URL's access to the system, but you'll all each have individual logins and be able to look at the system on a day-to-day basis if you wish, and chart progress and see the details about where things are. So those are two remaining steps to take place in the coming month. I'd like to show you our progress in the system through the second quarter of 17. If you have questions at the end of us getting through this initial report, I'll be happy to answer those. I have to switch over here, give me just a moment. This is an executive report developed from the Invisio system, and we're going to take a look tonight at the accomplishment of work for 2017 on City Council's goals. This is a summary of the entire report. If you recall, there were a total of 643 actions called tactics that were developed for the 2017 work plan. And I'm really happy to report that 88% of those, or 465 of those tactics, are on track, they're on task, and they're moving forward towards the accomplishment of the City Council's goals. 10% of them have experienced some disruption, and 2% of them have experienced some major Council goal number one, had a total of 58 tactics, and 93% of those are on track. I'll notice, or point out, the second status wheel in the report, which says tactics completed, those boxes aren't checked and progress shown there unless the tactic is completely done. So there could be a number of tactics there that are very near being done. Near being done wouldn't count towards the progress in that second wheel. On council goal number two, ensuring a financially sound city government to maintain or improve levels of service, there were a total of 177 tactics created within the 2017 work plan. 90% of those are on track, 5% or 6% have received some disruption, and 4% of those have received major disruption. City Council goal number three, to develop and maintain public infrastructure to improve community appearance and encourage private investment. 243 tactics developed for 2017 completion, 81% of those are on track, 12% some disruption, 5% major disruption. Council goal number four, preserve and nurture a quality community to improve resident health and safety, a total of 74 tactics developed there. 87, 88% of those are on track, 12% have received some disruption. And finally, council goal number five, engage the public to encourage community involvement, communication, and to build trust. There were a total of 91 tactics developed for the 2017 work plan, 85% of those are on track, 13% receive some disruption, and 1% have major disruption. For the first time that we've been doing our work plan at this juncture in the year, we're able, with real data and real stories, to bring to you a sense of completion as we move throughout the course of the year. And this software tool has been very, very helpful in that regard for us demonstrating to you and eventually to the public where we are at in terms of completing the work that we've committed to you and the community to complete on your behalf. So at this time, that, that concludes the formal presentation that I wanted to do, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about any of these individual goals or our progress on them.
Just one other quick point I'd like to make. We like the reporting tools in Invisio, it's a great way, we think, to present the information, it's a great way to track our progress. What might not be clear is the amount of work it took to get us to this point. Troy mentioned 600 and some tactics in the 2017 work plan. It's a tremendous amount of work to accomplish all of that work, but it's also been an adjustment for us to begin sharing data updates using the Invisio tool. So I want to provide some special recognition to our department directors and our division managers who had responsibility for learning how to use Invisio and updating information so that we were able to report it back to you. Again, it's a tremendous amount of work to accomplish the 2017 work plan, and it's been additional work above and beyond that to begin learning how to use the Invisio tool. So my heartfelt thanks to the department directors and division managers for helping us get to this point.
All right. One comment before I go to the council for questions. I want to thank all the staff that worked hard on this. A lot of the staff that you mentioned aren't here tonight. However, anytime we change and try to improve, it does take a lot of time, a lot of effort, but hopefully it'll be a more transparent, easier-to-access program for our residents. So thank you for that. I see one light lit up. Mr. McAdon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Echo your comment and a couple others. To the mayor's point, change is rarely easy, and so absolutely, my compliments to the entire staff for jumping on board to this effort. I mean, when you think about 643 individual items, not only are the folks on staff moving each of those forward or putting work in on each of those, or most of those, we saw there were a couple that were hanging out, but also the work to get them into the tool and then begin to manage the activity via the tool. That's a huge shift, and just seeing the distillation of that in this report for us tonight, I see benefit. My hope is that ultimately staff sees benefit, and I assume and expect that, you know, the City Manager's Office is seeing benefit just in terms of being able to have all this data in one place. It's very powerful. I'm excited to see the next step in this evolution in terms of giving the community access to this information. It's, it's certainly nice, and I know we received a bit of a report, an added detail report earlier in the week showing some detail behind those that are experiencing some level of interruption, and so it's great to be able to scan through this information at that high level and know that those that are green or complete are sort of out of sight, out of mind in terms of, we've accomplished what we agreed to set out, we set out to do, and we can instead focus on those that are experiencing some hurdle and, and understand in greater detail what's happening there. And I think that, to me, is some of the, the key power of a tool like this, is that it allows us to focus conversation where we really need it, as opposed to spending lots of time covering lots of things, including those that are doing just fine. Not that it's not important to pause and recognize that they've been successfully accomplished, but we have, and we've talked about this before, right? We have limited time together as an entire council and staff, and so when we take all those Mondays a year, and if we can really begin to zero in and use this information to help focus conversation and discussion on those things that really need it because they're stuck in the mud, that's, that's a powerful tool. So again, thanks, Troy. I know you've been working hard and your team to, to push this forward, and Brian, thank you and for giving Troy the, the green light to go off and find a solution on this, and I think Michelle's been involved as well. So I'll just say my thanks to everyone for helping turn this new page and, and this evolution of working smarter. Thanks.
All righty. Thank you. Ms. Carson, you have something?
Well, I do. We have some followers online that are presenting some questions. Mr. Bullock, the one?
Well, you know what? He needs to show up to a meeting if he has a question.
He would like to know how much disruption there was before Invisio.
How much disruption in, in the tasks we were doing?
Correct.
You know, I would say to you, this, the work that is represented in this plan, the things that we accomplished and those are disrupted, hasn't changed as a result of the tool. The tool has just given us much greater visibility to the work that's going on in the organization, and as Mr. McAdon commented, our ability to really focus our conversation, our time together as managing, managers, on not only what's off track, but what are we doing to get it back on track, has been made, enhanced greatly as a result of this software tool. So the, the tool didn't change anything in terms of disruption, it really has allowed us to focus our internal dialogue and soon our external dialogue about what we're doing to accomplish your goals.
Well, I had asked for clarification, so I hope you answered his question. I think he was interested also if there was a way to identify those disruptions prior to using this system.
Not without any anecdotal information that we may have captured in our previous plans, but I'll turn over to Mr. McBroom.
We did provide, so in the, in the first quarter update three months ago, we provided the information, we just provided it differently, and it wasn't quite as easy to zero in and quantify how much disruption there was. much disruption there was. My guess would be if we went back and sort of measured the number of tasks that were in disruption, well, there probably were fewer of them because it was earlier in the year. Would have been premature maybe to say that they were off track. Now that we're halfway through the year, we've got a little bit better information. And so as Mr. McAdonny mentioned, the key for us is to use that information and figure out, well, what do we do? Is it a, is it a task or a tactic that needs to have a deadline pushed out, or do we need to readjust our resources to get it back on track? So if we were to go back and quantify it, we probably had fewer that were sort of in disruption mode three months ago, but we didn't actually quantify them that way.
Oh, well, thank you.
Talk about disruptions. Renee Bullock is disrupting my meeting. I want to point that out. Any of you on council that take some time off to go out of town, do me a favor. Don't watch the council meeting while you're out of town. And please don't send text messages or emails to council members to ask questions for you. Take the night off, okay? That's coming from someone who's been here a long time. Take the night off. There's comparable people here that'll take care of it, competent people. Mr. McAdonny?
I just wanted to follow up on Renee slash Ms. Carson's question. And again, I'll defer to staff, but my sense is the power of the tool to speak to that question about disruptions happens over time, right? So what hasn't been possible is to clearly measure or look back at disruptions in time. What was, what were the number of disruptions or the percentage of projects that were disrupted in thirteen or fourteen or fifteen? We didn't have that ability. We didn't necessarily have a great handle on what was even in the pipeline. And so now, you get a year or two down the road with this, and you can look at what's happening by time of year or other stuff that's going on. It becomes a much more powerful tool for the organization and for council to understand and start to see where are we getting in our own way, or where are external factors starting to impact us. So my sense is it's, there's a lot of value now, but the value grows over time as you continue to manage yourself through the tool. Does that make sense?
If I might, if I might add, Mr. Mayor, the goal is also not necessarily to have everything green all of the time. The reality is priorities do change throughout the course of the year. When we put forth the 2017 work plan, it was before the start of the year, and new work materializes during the year. New priorities come about that we have to find the time and resources to put some effort into, which then means other work has to be adjusted. Again, deadlines have to be adjusted, priorities have to be shifted. So just adding on to Mr. McAdonny's point, great tool to help us do that in a more objective way. It wouldn't be correct for us, or certainly staff, to think, we've got to move heaven and earth and make everything green all the time. It's a more realistic assessment of where we are so that we can have a good discussion about what do we do about those that are, that are red.
Councilman Carson?
I'm speaking for myself now. So thank you. It really is, as a counselor, this is a tool that is very helpful to us because even though we have all of these agenda items out there and goals, we tend to forget what it was, where we're at, and this is just a really nice way for all of us to be able to stay on track and to visually know and see what's going on. So I thank you all. Wish you to come up with it a few years sooner, but thank you.
Mr. Amador?
I just want to thank the city manager and the staff and everybody who has made an effort to transition into the new dashboard, if you will. To me, the information seems a little hard just because it's really number-driven, and so it's kind of hard to interpret sitting where I'm at. But I know that, and I've said this many times, that staff had a day job before we implemented the 2K and the Highway Two and all the capital construction improvements that have gone out there. So this is just one more of those hurdles to improve the situation. And I think the reality is everyone is doing the best that they can do on a continuous daily basis. So that makes me proud, sitting up here to understand how many activities are going on in the city along with items that need attention. So I just want to say thank you to the staff and the city manager and everyone that is part of the team to input the data to see where we are. I know we're on the bleeding edge, so this is a trial pass one. What does it look like? But we will improve, and we'll see where we go next. So thank you.
All right. We're going to move on. Ready for the next item? Next item is the JAG Formula Grant presentation by interim Deputy Chief Moon. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'm here to inform you and to solicit comment regarding the Bureau of Justice Assistance Grant, also known as the JAG program. Earlier this month, the city was notified we were to be allocated nineteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars as part of the Formula Grant program. The grant does require an opportunity for public comments as in years past. Our proposal is to focus on law enforcement programs for the funding allocation. As a result, the following projects have been identified for funding. So five thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars for vehicle immobilization devices, four thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars for speed detection equipment, five thousand dollars for surveillance equipment, and four thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars for weapons racks for patrol cars to improve security. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have any questions concerning the JAG grant? This is a new process that we're having to take, correct?
This is the same process as in years past, so it's a Formula Grant that we get notified with.
Right, I know, but we have to do it publicly, so that's why you're up here tonight.
That's correct.
And I think that's a new caveat. Going over exactly what they'll be purchasing, but everything you went across sounds good to me.
Okay.
So hopefully, we'll get the grant. Anybody else have any? Seeing nothing, thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. This brings us to the administrative business portion of our meeting. There are a couple of items that we need to take care of. We need, we need to call a special meeting for September eleventh. Mr. McRum, did you want to talk about that?
I can provide the reason for the special meeting if council would like. We are planning to have a study session that night. We will miss a city council meeting on Labor Day, September fourth. So the purpose of the special meeting on the eleventh would be for council to formally act on the proposed intergovernmental agreement between the City of Commerce City and the City and County of Denver related to the Taurpania ramp. It's our approval that initiates the approval process in Denver, so we'd like to do that as soon as possible, and we expect it'll be ready for approval on September eleventh. We also have as a study session item that night, a review of the latest information regarding the proposed fire impact fees that have been proposed to Commerce City by both the Brighton and South Adams County Fire Protection Districts. So we have those on the study session, and then we have proposed that be an item on the special meeting to allow us to have an executive session with city council and for city council to provide us direction as we negotiate on your behalf IGAs with both of those fire districts.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion? Councilwoman Carson?
I have a question. That is the same night as the kids' first roast?
Yes, it is.
It is?
It is, okay. Mr. Mayor, are you attending the roast?
Not now. I have a council meeting to run.
Good to hear. Thank you.
I will be here. Mr. Teeter?
I'll make a motion to allow a September eleventh special meeting.
Thank you. Mr. McAdonny? I have a motion and second to call a special meeting on September eleventh. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Everybody needs to plan on being here for a six o'clock meeting on September eleventh. Okay. Is there any additional administrative council business to come before the city council this evening? Mr. McAdonny? Okay, and Mr. Teeter?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Last week, JD and I met with the Fire Commission. It was about a two-hour meeting. We discussed what was going on for this fee study that's coming up here. So tonight, I would like to make a request to allow the attorney, Robert Shealy, and whatever staff he needs, to attend the meeting with the South Adams County lawyers and staff to go through the fine points of this meeting we're going to have on September eleventh and hopefully get a lot of the details and questions that we have worked out before the September eleventh meeting.
All right, so it's a motion directing the city attorney to attend the meetings with their attorneys. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McAdonny seconds that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. May I just clarify my responsibility to meet with the attorney and hash out the questions that I have with their proposed IGA and studies and bring that back to the council to then get some instruction on how the council wants to proceed? Is that, is that fair understanding? Okay, thank you. Happy to do it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion's carried. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. I had, I noticed last week there's a closure for some maintenance work on Hundred Fourth and Chambers, and some of the folks in the area were understanding that we're going to do the corrective maintenance mill overlay. That won't happen until between September twelfth to October twentieth, and the school district, Twenty-Seven J, was concerned too because it's going to make, well, it's going to disrupt their bus schedule. So I'd like to make sure the city reaches out to Twenty-Seven J when they schedule that, that mill overlay on Chambers Road between the Hundred Fourth and Hundred Twentieth, that they work some sort of schedule out with them as far as what the movement's going to be for them, because a lot of kids are going to be moving in and out. They'll be going to Prairie View, Prairie View Middle School, and then Prairie View High School. Thank you.
Mr. Amador?
Thank you. I know that we have the school board member, Harvest Thomas, in the back, and he's not here anymore. But I live across the street from the underpass of Adam City High School, and with one week into the school year already, no sooner the class bell rings in the morning, we have a slew of kids, students, walking away from school down the block of Seventy-third in front of Hanson Elementary. Not only that, after school, the kids that can drive are drag racing in a single direction in oncoming traffic down the Old Quebec. So at the commencement of school, right around two thirty, three o'clock, maybe we could have some enforcement just kind of out there hanging out on the side road or something because it's a problem, and it's been a problem consistently since last year. And so it's just starting all back up again this year. So that's, if we could just maybe kind of step up some enforcement, just a presence, that would be helpful.
Good call. All right, any other administrative council business from the city council this evening? Seeing none, we're moving into reports. Mr. City Manager. Time's up. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Ford. I have no report this evening.
All right, back to the city manager.
You're very gracious, Mr. Mayor, to give me another opportunity to provide tonight's city manager report. We did send tonight's report out via email. We have an update on some questions raised about XL Energy's conversion plan, converting streetlights to LED streetlights. We have some information there for your benefit. We also have the year six summary of our McKinstry contract, which had to do with energy efficiency improvements in a number of city facilities, especially City Hall. So good news to report there. And then our monthly capital improvement program update. Of course, you've got a quarterly update tonight, and as we usually do, a look ahead to the city council work schedule. So as always, reach out with any questions.
Great, thank you. Getting my report, if somebody has something they'd like to add, I will allow for that to happen. You know, the ACED Executive Committee Board Meeting to critique and follow up on the site selector program that we just had, Rotary. And good news is, peaches came in. I saw Mr. Smith over there stacking peaches on pallets and dollying them out and loading people's cars, so we actually got a little work out of him at Rotary, so good to see. We had the ribbon cutting at the Reunion Elementary School, and I have to tell you, very, very impressive school. The inside is beautiful, seems like very well attended, very, very much needed in that area. But they use that pine, the pine, beetle kill pine inside, and it's not that white hallway with little square tile type of look. It's, it's very attractive on the inside. The only thing that I, I see, and I see it with every school, is they're not making the parking lot big enough. I worry, I worry about during the school year, people having to park in residential neighborhoods, on, on-street parking, and it's going to become an issue the more elementary schools we build. And I want the community to know that that's not at the fault of the city council, because the state does not allow us to require a certain amount of parking spaces for public schools. And so we're, we're limited to what they give the school based on what they have for land and budget. The downside to it is we always have to deal with the problems of parking because there's not enough spaces. So it's something that I think we should continue to try to reach out and talk to both school districts that are in the city when they are constructing or planning new schools, that how we can partner to try to increase the size of the parking lots, because it's a no-brainer if there's not enough spots. And we know now how many spots a school needs because we have enough of them around, that if they're not built adequately, then it becomes a neighborhood issue, and we build these nice new neighborhoods, and the last thing we want to do is create animosity between new residents and the schools. So it's just one of those things that has been out there picking at me that we don't have the ability to control, but we do have the power of negotiation and friendship with our partnering entities. And I'd like to try to utilize that to better enhance how we develop and build schools in our, in our community. Mr. McAdonny, you want to weigh in on that before I continue?
I do. And while you're right that the state disallows us from direct involvement and plan review, et cetera, I think the city does have a role in this conversation, and I think it comes at the time of flattening that neighborhood and approving the layout of those homes. If we look at the homes around Second Creek, around Turnberry, and now around Reunion Elementary, I think we're in a better place on Reunion Elementary than we are relative to the other two. The problem comes when we have homes that directly face the school property, and so they have a very limited frontage in front of their homes to park because they're, in each of those cases, they're on the, on a radius, so their front, frontage is narrowed. If we were to look at only having the sides of homes adjoin the school property, you'd have, every home would have their own frontage, and certainly there's a potential still for spillover on peak event nights. But I think it's something that we have to think about as we look at approving new neighborhoods that have embedded school sites in them. The other thing to note, at least in terms of the theory, as I understand it from the school district, is that neighborhood schools should have folks leveraging their two feet as opposed to their four wheels to go two blocks to the school. as opposed to their four wheels to go two blocks to the school. And what we find is that people are still driving a very short distance to the school even though they could be taking advantage of the connectivity to, to get to the school. So I do understand that Reunion Elementary does have a greater proportion of parking than the other two schools that I mentioned. And they've even used some unique parking, if you look at the west side of the school where they have some sort of angle-in type parking that may help. But, but either way, I think it's a, it's a item that I will look to future councils to consider and plant that note, that seed in staff's mind as we look at approving and reviewing future neighborhood designs. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
That's why I'm bringing it up. I think it's important that we don't lose that focus when we start talking with these districts about schools because we've all seen and heard the complaints and the problems coming out of Turnberry and Second Creek and areas like that. And we need to do our best for building a quality community for a lifetime to truly engage with the other partners and, and try to, try to do it right. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I want to add, add to that. Thank you, Councilman McAlvey for bringing that up. I think when we, when it comes to the developments and layouts, we should have some sort of setback from the residential, from the schools, maybe an increase of the street width that would help when the cars are parked in front of their homes, that there is a, enough bypass, cars moving in both directions, adequate space for people who partner at the school to be able to open up their cars and, and kids to have safer space for cars to actually see kids moving in and out of the crosswalk. So I just wanted to add that. Thanks.
All right, Councilwoman Carson.
Just put my two cents in there. The city does have a big role it can play in this and that is ensuring that we have those connectivity safe to school walk paths. And then the community has a role to make sure that we help ensure that these students do have safe walking. And so does that mean that you open your door thirty minutes before it's school time and that you make sure you're sitting on your porch when school lets out so that we know that children know you're out there and you're watching? And, and so it lies with, within the whole community in order to do this. I know some of us are of the age that we, we always walk to school and, and there was not a thought that we weren't safe. And I'm not gonna say that it's not safe anymore, but there definitely is an apprehension within parents' minds. And, and part of it is because mom and dad are both heading off in a different direction, they're not home. So whatever we can do as community members and as the city to work with the schools and to help ensure that. I know there's programs out there for volunteers to stand on every corner, to help students cross streets, to help ensure that. So, you know, I know that we have future council candidates watching and I would encourage you to continue to listening to those type of conversations to help better your community. So thank you.
All right, I'm gonna continue with my report. Neighborhood outreach, again, successful, sketchy weather, but you, you pulled it off. And so for the staff, great job. I got to be there for a little while and it looked like it was an okay turnout. Normally, the Pioneer Park turnout is just massive, but there were all kinds of weather reports and weather, you know, storm watches and, and I think that, not only that, the Broncos were playing. You might check their schedule before you start scheduling outreaches. But otherwise, it, it went off good. So thank you for that. And then Rotary, again, and I did not make it to the Rotary picnic that was Sunday. However, I did get my son married off. My youngest son got married on Saturday. I didn't lose a son, I gained a daughter-in-law, which is the good news. And I wish them both the best. Now, anybody can add to that report that would like to? And it looks like there's quite a few lights lit up here, so let's start with Mr. McAlvey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually had a question or comment on the city manager's update. One of the items noted tonight was the update, the year six summary of our McKinstry contract. That's a, a performance contracting agreement that we worked with McKinstry on back in 2009. It's good to see, it's really exciting to see how successful this has been. I think, just to kinda go back in the time machine a little bit, folks looked at me a little cross-eyed and cross-wise when I brought this up. The concept of performance contracting and the whole benefit to the community wasn't a, a well-understood concept at that time, but folks bought in and sort of committed to trust and see what would happen. And here we are, six years in, and seeing not only the benefit that was anticipated, but, but then some. The, the thing that makes me, this sparks me to think about is opportunities for the existing rec center that's gonna be going under improvements very soon and our new recreation center, which we didn't, we've done a lot in terms of the quality of that building. We didn't incorporate any renewable energy or other measures, to my knowledge. I know for a fact we don't have PV considered in that project, but I, I do wonder if it's worthwhile to look at what's still out there. I know that the whole renewable energy credit model has changed quite a bit, so there may not be the potential return that we saw when we committed to this effort. But I do think it would be in our best interest to revisit, especially the, the existing rec center in terms of, I know with some of the commit, the systems that we're reviewing and the opportunity to upgrade those systems, we'll be doing that under the umbrella of the capital improvement effort, but it would be interesting to at least understand what opportunity there is to solve for any of those things through a similar arrangement, whether it's with McKinstry or another provider, as opposed to those funds coming directly out of 2K. So not a need for staff to update tonight, but if we could potentially take a brief look at that if staff's, or if, if council's open to exploring that, I'd, I'd certainly be interested in hearing what, what staff has to, to come back on.
Given where we're at in the process, could be something that staff could come back at a study session and give us what, what can and can't happen in those regards. But thanks for bringing it up, Mr. McAlvey. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you. Just wanted to say I appreciate all the employees who are out to employ appreciation barbecue this year. There's a lot of tender out there, the five up to, what, thirty years? Thirty years, so hats off to all the employees who participate in that and the ones who couldn't, appreciate your service. Also want to thank Adams Fourteen Education Foundation, working with Commerce City Business Professional through two thousand dollars worth of ticket sales. A quarter of that went to the Adams Fourteen Foundation. The kids who participated were from Adams Fourteen, Twenty-Seven J School District and the Suncor Boys and Girls Club. So thanks again for allowing that to happen and, and for thirty-three kids and parents to come out and see the Rapids. Unfortunately, they lost a heartfelt score on DC. Howard went to stop a, a goal, something kind of leisery, but he ended up losing by zero to one, so thank you.
Mr. Teeter?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple things. First of all, Maria's here, so Maria, the, for the overlays that I've seen so far, it's like it's a great job out there. I think that company's doing a good job. Everything that I've seen so far looks great out there. We did lose a sign last night at Seventy-Second Place in Niagara again, but that's probably gonna be a pretty common thing there. I don't know if we could move that back a little bit or something, I don't know. And the third thing is I'll be at the Dr. Cog Retreat Friday and Saturday in Colorado Springs.
All righty. Now, if there be no further business to come before the city council of Commerce City this evening, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here or participating from home.